It is 4:00 PM on Tuesday, October 3rd, and I'm going to call the meeting to order for the City of Iowa City Work Session. The first item is to discuss, well, hello, everyone. The first item is to discuss traffic safety in Iowa City with staff review of our 10-year pedestrian collision analysis report. And I think Kent Ralston is going to come forth and give us that. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. My name's Kent Ralston. I'm the city's transportation planner. Also with me today is Sarah Walls, also a transportation planner and happens to be our bike and ped expert here in Iowa City. We've got maybe 30 minutes or so of presentation to give to you all. We can either answer questions as we go or answer questions at the end. However, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you would like to handle that, it's fine by us. We, as the mayor said, will be discussing the Iowa City pedestrian collision analysis that we recently completed. It covers about 10 years of data from 2013 to 2022. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Sarah Walls here did an excellent job on the report and did most of the heavy lifting, so thanks to her. As far as the presentation outline is concerned, I will, or excuse me, Sarah will cover a little bit about why we did the analysis, trends in pedestrian collisions, highest collision locations. She'll talk a little bit about statistics and major findings, comparison to other communities, and then I'll jump back in and sort of discuss what we're doing right, which is sort of the fun part about the presentation. The other thing I'd like to mention is that certainly everything that's covered in today's discussion and everything we do in our office sort of looks through the lens of the Council's strategic planning goal of mobility, which we've highlighted here on the screen. It's vitally important to what we do here in our office and, of course, vitally important to the community as well. With that, I will turn it over to Sarah to discuss a little bit about why we did the analysis, and I'll jump back in here in a few minutes. Thank you.
Great. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. Sarah Walls with the MPO on City of Iowa City. Yes, why we did the analysis. What sort of inspired us to do the analysis is every year we get the Governor's Highway Safety Association's annual spotlight on highway safety, pedestrian traffic fatalities by state. And it provides a fair amount of detail of what's happening safety-wise across the country. And there were some aspects of this study that I thought were interesting. Traditionally, we've just looked at locations. And the, this allowed us to focus in not just on locations of collisions, but locations where there were serious collisions, fatalities, some of the characteristics of those collisions that we could look at, not just at a specific location, but like along a corridor and see things that might be in common at different locations along a corridor throughout the community. It also, their study also looks at environmental factors, or some years it looks more at environmental factors than others, like what time of day, weather, things like that. And so we just wanted to look at things comprehensively, just to see if we were missing things. Also, other influence and actions of pedestrians and drivers. They put some effort into looking at distracted driving, distracted pedestrians, people under the influence, things like that. And so the thought was that by identifying some common characteristics or factors, we could begin sort of a systematic way of applying countermeasures at locations, perhaps before collisions and definitely before, you know, there were serious injury or fatality. So the data that we use is the same data that the GHSA uses, which is we use our, the data that's collected by the Iowa DOT. They collect the data from the police departments. So when there is a collision, the report that's filed by the police gets almost immediately recorded by the DOT. Something to note is that while the GHSA report looks at all pedestrian collisions, and a pedestrian is anybody who's not in a motor vehicle or on a bike, we removed collisions that were on the interstate or 218 because obviously we have no way to control those situations, and those aren't places that are designed for pedestrians. So we remove those from our report. So just thinking about pedestrian collisions by year here in Iowa City, you will notice that this begins two years before the actual, the study is 2013 to 2022. But we had some basic information about years before, so I included 2011 and 2012 in this chart. And I also dropped in where we are as of yesterday in 2023. So again, that 2011 and 2022 is not a part of the analysis. And I think it's important to keep in mind that this is a representation of over a decade and that in that decade, Iowa City has grown considerably. We've had many large road projects, many changes, many intersection improvements. We've also gone through some major, you could say, cultural changes. So the adoption of smartphones, COVID definitely accounts for that very low number of 11 in 2020, but you can see that the trend was already dropping in 2019. And then right now, who knows where we are? I mean, a lot of people are working from home. We're relying a lot more on deliveries, so that low number of eight, will that stay? We have no way of knowing whether that will be the case, but that's where we are now. And then we don't just want to look at number of collisions, but we want to look at severity. So again, this breaks it down by year, starting in 2011. You can see that in the period that the study covered, there were three fatalities over those 10 years. And then this year, which is 2023, which is not considered in the study, we've had another fatality. So we had gone for five years without a fatality. But we want to keep track of not just our collisions not increasing, but what the severity of those collisions are. And that's the, the GHSA report focuses mainly on fatalities. And then Vision Zero, of course, looks at fatalities and serious injury with the idea that people will inevitably make mistakes, but that we want to take the severe injury and fatality number to zero. So on this next slide, those were the locations, and some of those locations had multiple collisions, the severity, the worst severity of a collision at that site. And then we overlaid this on the, on the speed of the roadway. And so one of the things is that, to note, is that we, for most of our streets, the vast majority of our street miles are 25 miles an hour is the speed limit. Now, we know not everybody goes the speed limit, but that does, you know, keep things on the low end. This also gives us an opportunity to just look at patterns. So the places, what you probably noticed first is the places that are attractive to pedestrians, so the university in downtown area, you know, in the center, you know, maybe the UI sports area. And then we have a couple of commercial areas. This would be the area around the Hy-Vee on First Avenue and Southeast Junior High, over here on the west side, the area around the shopping center on Mormon Track. But that's kind of where things are clustered, and those are places where we see higher densities of pedestrians. But then the other pattern that sort of stands out is a place where we don't see, where we regularly see pedestrians, but not a high density of pedestrians, which is along the Highway 1 and Highway 6 corridor. And there we have a number, two of the three fatalities during that period, and then a number of serious injuries. So, you know, and that's not a predictable thing from the, from the point of view of, those are not centers of pedestrian activity. So the location ranking table, this is sort of the traditional way that we do with motor vehicle collisions, where there are points assigned based on the number of collisions, and then there's severity numbers. And so this is a ranking of the top 20 intersections or mid-block locations. The two that are highlighted in sort of pale gold, I guess you say, are actually university-owned streets, but we put them in there because they sort of function as part of our street network. But that, that collision point, that's the total number of collisions at that location in 10 years. So the highest number was eight at a single intersection. So that's less than one a year, which is not to diminish, you know, we would like that number to be zero, but we don't have an intersection that has an average above of one or over. And to give an example of one of the shortcomings of the, of the collision ranking in this way is that we're trying to get toward a rate. And this, the collision rankings here take into account the vehicular, you know, the average daily traffic on that street. That's information that we can collect ourselves, but we also get it from the DOT. What we don't have for all these sites is the average daily pedestrian traffic. So it skews things, again, toward the high pedestrian area. So for example, if you look at that top-ranked intersection, Burlington and Gilbert Street, with eight collisions over 10 years, during the PM peak hour, that's one hour at that intersection, 474 pedestrians pass through that intersection. And that area has average daily traffic of a little over 20,000. So that would be very different than an intersection down along Highway 6 where we don't have numbers, but I think it would be safe to say it's lower than 100 a day. Still high traffic, though, but, but low on the pedestrian end. Then in terms of location characteristics, while the majority of all pedestrian collisions occur at street intersections, when we focus in on those that result in serious injury or death, a little more than half happen at non-intersection locations, so at the mid-block locations. And just in general, generally speaking, the mid-block locations, again, these are pedestrians, which is anybody who's not in a car. So these could be people who are standing in the roadway, crossing the roadway, walking in the roadway. And when I say crossing the roadway, that, unless there's a mid-block crossing, it would be an illegal crossing, so like jaywalking. Entering or exiting a car or crossing a driveway access will sometimes be in there as well. So these aren't necessarily, you know, when we say pedestrian, I think we think of somebody who is walking to get somewhere, you know, they're walking intentionally. And this includes some other things. So just to be aware of the risks that come with all the different ways that we use our And then another location characteristic, looking at our city streets, I'm sorry, that font got goofed up there. Nationwide, nearly two-thirds of fatal pedestrian collisions occur on non-freeway arterials. Again, that GHSA data included interstate collisions, and I wasn't able to ascertain exact, you know, precise numbers for that, but I think when you subtract those, it brings it closer down to where our number is. I think it's at about a third nationally are on the non-freeway arterials. And that this has been studied in the Journal of Transportation and Land Use. They had a landmark study that shows that these areas that have three or more lanes, speeds over 30 miles per hour, which is not that high when you think about it, with segments flanked by retail, groceries, or other essential services, that's where we see the high fatalities. So, and that describes various parts of our community, but definitely the Highway 1, Highway 6 corridor. And then just a little information about the vehicle action preceding crash. Again, the pie chart is, is looking at the severe injury fatality, and clearly the vast majority are traveling essentially straight. And so that, again, accounts for your mid-block because the car is not turning. The left-hand turn is the next one. And if you think about it, a car that's traveling straight when it strikes someone is at a higher speed. A left-hand turn would be higher speed than a right-hand speed turn because the turning radius is different. So from that perspective, that's kind of what you would expect. And then contributing pedestrian circumstance, again, the pie chart is just looking at the serious injury fatality. So improper crossings are part of that and failure to yield. These are things that we need to look at where there might be potentially either a crossing needed or are these places where people are lacking facilities? And if you, if you think about it, if you don't have a sidewalk to be on, that means you also don't have a crosswalk to cross. It means you don't have a pedestrian signal at that intersection if there's not a sidewalk. So those things all go together. So just again, highlighting, you know, the importance of all these things that work together to keep pedestrians safe. We looked at a number of other things, but I think the only other one that stood out was the pedestrian collisions involving children. And I just wanted to mention this because we, you know, the children are the most vulnerable road users along with elderly people, but people, you know, want their kids to walk to school, want their kids to walk to activities. And so there weren't, over the 10 years, there weren't a terribly high number of children. The red dots are the ones under 12. And there's that little, small cluster, oops, sort of near, of the right age group, near Southeast Junior High. And that is an area that we're working to create a more walkable environment. It's going to take some time, but we're looking at Ped Refuge Island and some other things to make that area better. And then how we compare to other Iowa communities, this is just looking at fatalities, and that's pedestrian fatalities per 100,000 population. And these are standard ways that, of comparison, and pedestrian fatalities per million vehicle miles traveled. And, you know, I think the thing that stands out is the communities that are sort of known for education, so Cedar Falls, Ames, Iowa City are on the low end. Iowa is, is also one of the lowest states for pedestrian fatalities. And then we are on the low end of Iowa City. There could be a variety of reasons, you know, economic reasons, the fact that college communities tend to probably invest more in pedestrian facilities, at least around their universities where they're anticipating students walking, taking the bus, that kind of thing. So I'll hand it back over to Kent.
So now that we've heard a little bit about some of the highlights of the data that were in the study from Sarah, I'd just like to quickly walk through, I think, some of the things that we're doing right, which is the more fun part of the presentation. And again, with the goal of providing mobility for everyone, which is part of the strategic plan, after all, we're all pedestrians at some point in time, whether that's our primary mode of transportation, or whether we're getting off our bike, getting out of the bus, whatever the case is, and finishing up our walk to our, our final destination. So I'll talk just a little bit about provision of sidewalks and curb ramps, low-speed roadways, pedestrian crossings, signalized intersections, and then some corridor enhancements as well. So first off, sidewalks. And this is not shocking that sidewalks help get folks out of the street and provide a safe refuge for them, but we do have areas in town where we don't have sidewalks. I would say primarily, I'm going to throw out a number, but 90 to 95% of our roadways have sidewalks, they're in good shape and that are present. But we do have some neighborhoods isolated, but some neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks. And then we have some arterial street sections and things that don't have sidewalks, but primarily we're doing a good job. And obviously, that's an important element to reducing collisions. That said, sidewalks are required with all development as part of our subdivision of development standards and have been for many, many years. And that really puts us in a good place to start. So in my time here at the city for over 17 years, that's been a policy and a standard that's been in place. So folks that were here before myself and engineers that were here before myself did a good job of making sure that was a standard that we have. So that has set us in a good place compared to a lot of other communities. Areas that are lacking sidewalks are usually addressed as other infrastructure projects occur and through our sidewalk infill program. So through the capital improvements program, there's a line item for sidewalk infill. And then what we try to do to be as efficient as we can is put those sidewalks in during other projects, whether that's a sewer project, a water main project, or a road reconstruction. That's the time we want to go in and put sidewalks in where we can. And then lastly, I noted on the slide, the complete streets policy. So the complete streets policy that the council adopted many years ago, I believe we were second in the state to adopt a complete streets policy, which is something to be very proud of, just keeps us on track and kind of keeps, keeps us grounded. When you all may not be on council and I'm not in my position anymore, you know, that gives the marching orders for people that come after us. So just kind of keeps us honest in what we're trying to do. In terms of low-speed roadways, we all know that the average risk of death or pedestrian injury rises dramatically as speeds increase. This is not a shocker to any of us. The good news is, and Sarah alluded to this earlier, is that we don't have a ton of high-speed roadways in our community, which is, is positive. You can see in the map that's in the, in the presentation there, largely the center of our community, which is also the most dense in population, dense in housing, dense in jobs, and where most our vehicles are, some of the higher vehicle counts are all 25 mile per hour or even lower in the, the central business district. What you sort of see is that outlining sort of arterial street sort of network sort of towards the suburbs, if you want to call them that, here in Iowa City, where we may be at 30 or 35 mile per hour. And then, of course, we've got Highway 1 and Highway 6. 218 and I-80 aren't identified on this, but certainly Highway 1 and Highway 6, as Sarah mentioned, are higher speeds and, and are traditional highways. So it's a little bit more of a challenge for us. And I should also mention that when we have, these are posted speeds, of course, when we have streets that have higher speeds than the we would like, higher than are posted, we also have some tools we use to combat that. We have the traffic calming program, which you all are aware of, that we come to the council with semi-frequently and ask for your help with approvals for traffic calming. But we also do some more design-related things on roadways where we use four- or three-lane conversions, for instance, to try and kind of naturally, naturally slow traffic as well. In terms of pedestrian crossings, marked pedestrian crossings are appropriate intersections in mid-block locations. To indicate a preferred pedestrian crossing location, alert drivers to, excuse me, alert drivers to an often-used pedestrian crossing, and then, of course, to indicate school walking routes. But I think we do a really good job of this in some of our more important neighborhood locations. This photo happens to be a school crossing in the north side neighborhood. And as you can see, it's got continental, in kind of the foreground of the picture, it's got the continental pavement markings, which provide better visibility for motorists, but also provide a better visual cue for pedestrians that that's where they should be crossing, especially if they're younger children. And then you can also see that signs are maintained in good condition. We actually went through all of the city's signs within, I'm going to say, about the last 10 years. We used the snowplow routes and actually replaced all of the city's signs as part of our retro reflectivity standards. So if you go to other communities, you'll notice that they are all not in that good a shape, but in Iowa City, we really do a nice job. You'll also notice in this photo that we use the high-visibility yellow-green signs, which isn't a requirement, but something we've chosen to do many years ago. And then something that I think is, is a small thing for us to do, but I think makes a big impact, is that you'll notice in the photo there, we've started to add the reflective strips on the post itself. This is something that North Liberty was actually doing, and we had noticed, we have noticed, called them, discussed it with them, and they'd been getting some good feedback. So we started doing it here as well. They were able to give us their manufacturer and the details on what their, their price was. We're only using these on pedestrian crossing signs at this time, and that's on purpose so that we're only drawing as much attention as we can just to pedestrian crossing signs. Some other communities around the country use them on stop signs and other signs as well, but right now, we've chosen to just use them for pedestrian crossings. Sort of changes that shape of the sign itself, and then, of course, at night, the visibility and conspicuity of the sign. And then at some locations where we've got higher volume roadways, we enhance that pedestrian crossing using a host of other tools. And I've just noted a few here. The first is in-street yield to pedestrian signs, which I think you're all familiar with. And those signs simply remind motorists of the law. The law in Iowa is as soon as a pedestrian takes one foot in the crosswalk, then they've established themselves there, and motorists must yield. In Iowa, you do not have to yield to a pedestrian if they are behind the curb, essentially, is how that works here. So those signs just really reinforce to the motorists what the law is, and I think we've got some good feedback from those. The second is, the image there is pedestrian refuge islands, which Sarah had mentioned earlier in the presentation. This one happens to be, right, adjacent to McPherson Park and was installed with the recent overlay project in Muscatine. Those are a tool that we'd like to use more of. They're not inexpensive, but I think for sort of our bang-to-buck, so to speak, they're pretty effective. So the idea being you only have to cross one lane of traffic at a time. They also sort of naturally slow traffic, so we sort of kill two birds, if you want to say that. The last one on here is rectangular rapid flashing beacons. And I would also throw our radar feedback signs into this, so sort of two electronic methods we're using. The image in the bottom happens to be the Cleary Walkway, and this was actually a University of Iowa project. This was not a city project, it is a city street, but it was a university project. And I would say these have mixed results. Sort of the jury's still out, I think, on radar feedback signs as well as these as to their effectiveness. I don't necessarily think they hurt anything, but for the cost, I'm not sure if we're seeing a real benefit to those. So more time, I think more study needs to go into those. I think in the right locations, they can be helpful. Don't want to say they're not, but just, it's something that we're not completely sold on just yet at this point in time. And then it signals, signalized intersections. With respect to them, we have a host of tools we use as well. The first, our pedestrian countdown timers, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. In and around downtown, they're almost at every signalized intersection, I think, if not all at this point in time. The idea being to show exactly how much time is left to the pedestrian so they feel safe when they're leaving the curb. And if they don't think they have enough time, of course, that gives them the information they need to hold back and wait till the next signal cycle. The second is leading pedestrian intervals we use as part of our signal phasing. This one, you've all probably used, but a lot of, I think, folks don't even realize it's in place. So the, the way the lead pedestrian interval works is typically when you're at an intersection, the green light comes on for motorists, and the walk signal also comes on for corresponding pedestrian traffic. When we use the lead interval, the walk light actually comes on about five to seconds, five to seven seconds before the motors get the corresponding green light. The idea being then that pedestrians out in the intersection has established themselves, feels comfortable, and is more visible to motorists. As pedestrians, you've probably also witnessed the fact that if you're on the corner and there are vehicles turning right on red, you sort of get pinned back in the corner sometimes if they're not being courteous, and then you're sort of stuck. This also helps get you out and then, like I say, establish so that that doesn't occur as well. And we've used those at almost all the signalized locations in town at this point. If we haven't, we just haven't had a, I guess, a request to do so or felt the need to do it at this point in time. The next item is the APS systems for visually impaired, so the audible pedestrian signals. These are a requirement that we use these now. You've probably all walked through the intersection right out here at Clinton and Washington, where it actually tells you when it's safe to walk. So if you're visually impaired, it tells you when to walk and in what direction, which is very useful for some of our residents. And then the last is just a simple tool, but it's turning traffic, yield to pedestrian signs. So these are often on mast arms up on the signals in downtown Iowa City, and it's simply reminding motorists to expect pedestrians in the crosswalk, and again, to remind them that they must yield to those pedestrians. In terms of some other corridor enhancements, something we're trying to do more of is use landscaping, hardscaping, to separate vehicular traffic from the pedestrian way. These are just a couple of examples that we quickly pulled up. The first, of course, is the university's music building at the corner of Clinton and Burlington. And you can see there in the image, there's sort of a raised bed with a curb and then some vegetation in that. One is to make the pedestrian more comfortable, and two, it also, we've provided more space so the pedestrian actually isn't as close to the curb. So it's just kind of a quality of walking situation where you're probably safer because you're further away from the curb, but also just to feel more comfortable and to have a more pleasant walk. The second is also, this image is the Towncrest area. And there's a whole bunch of visual cues, and then, of course, some physical cues as to where you're supposed to be and where you're not supposed to be as a pedestrian. This helps us direct pedestrians to the actual crosswalks themselves because of the vegetated beds, and then also just provides some, it's more aesthetically pleasing, and then just provides a little bit more space between the pedestrian and the motorists as well. In some cases, in terms of corridor enhancements, it's nice to provide completely separated facilities. Neither of these photos will probably come as a surprise to you. The first there is Burlington Street at Riverside Drive, which is the pedestrian overpass. The pedestrian overpass there has something like 1,500 pedestrians a day that cross it on average. The one in Iowa, I think, is actually a little bit higher, and there's over 2,000 pedestrians a day. So when you have these really intense sort of atypical situations, we've been wise enough to provide completely separated facilities. I would also say that the second bullet point there is, the city council has had a longstanding policy to provide either an eight-foot, or even now, a 10-foot wide, wide sidewalk along our arterial streets. So when we construct a new arterial street, we're providing a minimum of eight-foot walk on one side of the street. It's separated, not as much as maybe an off-street trail, but I mean, you're, you're separated, I would say, enough to feel very comfortable. say, enough to feel very comfortable as a pedestrian, a dog walker, somebody pushing a stroller, that sort of thing. And recently, when we did our bike master plan just several years ago, it actually recommended that we increase that to 10 feet now for bikes as well. So what we're finding is a lot of bicyclists are using a wide sidewalk as a trail, essentially. So adding that additional two feet really gives them more space to, again, share that space with the dog walkers, the stroller pushers, that sort of thing. And then, of course, we've got our off-street trail system as well, which provides the most comfortable and safe routes. And often, in Iowa City, those are parallel routes to an arterial street, for instance, which really helps out in terms of just getting folks to where they need to be, not just for recreational purposes. In terms of corridor enhancements, another thing that we do is provide street lighting at all intersections and all crossings of trails at arterial streets, for instance. That's done by way of policy. We don't bring those to the city council. We just get those done, which provides a huge safety benefit to pedestrians, and also gives motorists cues where they need to be turning and that sort of thing. We'll also provide mid-block lighting where block lengths exceed 600 feet. So in certain situations in town where we have really long residential blocks, we'll also add mid-block lighting periodically if that block's longer than 600 feet. And then the last bullet point, of course, we've got some pedestrian lighting in areas of really high pedestrian traffic, downtown Iowa City, of course, and then some of the university trails as well. And then lastly, in terms of street design, I wanted to mention these. None of these three, well, all of these three are within the curb lines themselves, so these are really more vehicular in nature, but have a benefit to pedestrians. The first are lanewits. You know, for the last decade or so, we've really been trying to narrow down our lanewits of our streets, which slows traffic, which then also has the result of making being a pedestrian more comfortable on the side of the roadway. The second is a four-to-three-lane conversion, which we've done pretty, I would say, with great success on First Avenue and Mormon Trek. And even though we're not moving the curb line, what we've done in both those situations is went from the four-lane section to a three-lane section with the center-left turn lane, added bike lanes, but by doing so, you've also added about six or seven feet worth of pavement before you even get to the curb line. And then, of course, as a pedestrian, you're going to feel more comfortable walking along those corridors. And then the last is, of course, traffic calming, which is slowing folks down, slowing motorists down in residential neighborhoods, which then, of course, just improves the quality of life in general, if you're in your front yard, if you're walking on the sidewalk, that sort of thing. So this is by no means an exhaustive list of the things we're doing. We just wanted to sort of provide some input on how we're trying to reduce pedestrian collisions and essentially make Iowa City a safer place. Unless there's any questions at this point, I'll turn it back over to Sarah just to provide some information on the next steps that we'll be taking.
So obviously, the ultimate time to improve pedestrian accommodations is with a new construction, new street construction, whether it's a whole new street or a major overhaul of a street. But in the interim time, when we're dealing with the street as we have it, we're going to use this study to help us with a number of things. So the first of which is to evaluate those top pedestrian collision locations and corridors, evaluate, and we're already doing this for some characteristics so that we can make improvements. So right now, we're really looking at those multi-lane roads, the roads with three or more lanes that are higher speed or have major attractions, whether that be grocery stores or schools alongside. Also, as we're doing major road construction projects, so with, for example, Benton Street, next year we'll be doing Court Street, gosh, let's rattle them all off, Rochester. What we've been doing is doing a full assessment of all the signage, where are pedestrian crossings, are they appropriately marked? You know, just cleaning up, sometimes over the years, we've gotten other, too many signs, and we're just trying to clean things up so that, especially in the case of pedestrians, that those areas where pedestrians are going to be, that that's the thing that stands out as you're driving along the road, and to making sure that we're getting the curb cuts when we don't already have them there. We're also reviewing mid-block, the existing mid-block crossings, so for example, where we already might have either a crossing or a pet refuge island or something similar, to make sure that those are all signed consistently, that our roundabouts are signed consistently so that when people approach these things, it always looks the same, and they're very We are now collecting pedestrian and bike counts with all of our intersection studies. So lately, we've been working on Burlington Street, so we're getting those peak-hour counts so that we will have a better ability to assess crash rates at the intersections. And once we have more data, I think we need a few more years of data before we can really evaluate the four-to-three-lane conversions in terms of pedestrian safety. We have developed recently a matrix for prioritizing where we get new curb cuts. Like Kent said, we're still lacking them in some areas, and also for prioritizing pedestrian refuge islands. And we're coordinating that with transit because, thanks to all of you, we have the fare-free bus service, which means a lot more bus riders, which means a lot more pedestrians. And so we have to make sure that those folks can cross to where they need to get to access the bus, to and from the bus. So again, focusing on bus routes, routes to school, access to parks, access to shopping, and essential services. And with growth and development and change, roadways that we, you know, we may update a roadway, and then things change along that roadway. With development and growth, the way the road gets used changes. So when we think about the riverfront crossings, we're evaluating various intersections right now for different treatments. That extends over to the West Riverfront, you know, Benton Street, Orchard, Myrtle, lots of things are happening over there. Even up on North Dodge, we're seeing a change to the commercial uses along North Dodge and some difficulty crossing from one side of the street to the other to catch the bus. Pepper Woods, another area that's changing. We're looking very carefully at Kirkwood, which right now does not have curb cuts, does not have pedestrian crossings, has special populations, has commercial uses. Very important to get that updated. And then Kirkwood and Secamore, you know, Kirkwood Community College is not what it was. Things are changing, and so those uses along there will change, and we may have to reevaluate what is there. So with development and redevelopment, we want to see improvement. Where there aren't sidewalks and curb cuts, get those. Where there are too many driveway access points, consolidate those. So really, development and redevelopment should really be an opportunity, like with zoning code changes and new subdivisions and new redevelopment, is to look at what can we get for the street, to make the street function better and be safer, because it takes, as we know, it takes a long time to change it once it's done wrong. So that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Councilor Dunn, I think you're on the phone, so if anyone has any comments or questions, please chime right in.
I just had one comment, and I was glad to see that it wasn't that I hadn't noticed it for years and years, but the reflective piece that goes down on the post is extremely noticeable. It's really great, and it was something that I noticed. I was like, that's new, right? And it just, it really pops. It does show exactly where. So I just wanted to commend you guys for it because it really is a great addition, and I've noticed it all over town.
Yeah, it was just done like three or four years ago, I think. And it's just at the crossing, so when you have the crosswalk ahead signs, those don't have it. It'll just be directly at the crossing.
Yeah. I take Keokuk, so the Lucas Farms.
Yep.
Right there.
Right.
That's really, really helpful.
Yep.
Because that's an area that has some, a lot of kiddos and church and all of that, so, and a weird curve, so.
Yeah.
Well, thank you both for your presentation. For the fellow councilors, I did meet with Sarah at Kent before, what, a couple of weeks ago, maybe, to talk about this, and also just my more general concerns about traffic A few comments. One, you know, I've had one injury as a pedestrian, and it happened actually to be in the curb ramp. You know, with the ice at the bottom of the ramp, where actually was my first, the night of my first city council meeting. Broke my glasses, had to go into the co-op and get some Scotch tape to tape them back together again. So what I've just learned is that there's a new public right-of-way accessibility guidelines. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. You know, it does talk about a whole variety of issues related to that, you know, accessibility within the public right-of-way, one of which is addressing standing water and ice on the curb ramps.
Yep.
So in our climate, where we get both, right, it's, in some locations in Iowa City, I would say there's several inches of water, if it's summertime, and similar thickness in winter with the ice. So I would hope, certainly hope that when we reconstruct a street, we repave a street, that those locations are dealt with to make sure that flow line doesn't go up the curb ramp. Because it, too, is kind of a breakdown in the accessibility when that happens, and can be a source of injury as well. One thing I kind of found interesting is, I think, half of the 20 top collision intersections are streets that are included in our strategic plan, Burlington, Jefferson Market. So there is kind of an opportunity there. You know, it's on the strategic plan as well as North Governor and, or, strategic plan, yeah, I think it has North Governor and Dodge.
Dodge.
Because it is those streets with multi-lanes in one direction where our speed limits begin to break down. And, you know, we, as was noted, there are a lot of 25 mile-an-hour streets in the center of town, and unfortunately, many of them see speeds well over 25. And if we can diet those roads, turn them back to two-way traffic, I think we probably would see fewer crashes. And I would also say, and this is the dimension that I had been thinking about when I asked for, you know, a discussion on this, is what's the experiential state when we're walking our streets? You know, the collisions and fatalities, the serious injuries are tragic and terrifying and, you know, really do need to be addressed, obviously. But there's also this other dimension, which is just how do you feel when you're walking on our streets? And, you know, that contributes, that's what I hear a lot of comment about from residents, is I don't feel safe on this street. And so it just contributes to the sense of quality of life. And most likely, there is some correlation between the collisions and so forth on those streets where you just don't feel safe. I do think the refuge islands are a really important strategy. You mentioned, you know, we're seeing higher bus ridership. So I could easily see, you know, the risk of someone seeing the bus, they're on the other side of the street, they see the bus coming, and they're going to run across the street to make sure they don't miss it. And so I think that's yet another kind of incident where having a refuge island where, okay, maybe I just get to the first midpoint, and then I'll, you know, it may not be safe to cross the whole street, but I'll take it one lane at a time. Making sure that connectivity to the bus stops is so important. I just will mention in brief that, you know, I talked with Kent and, you know, the staff on the issue of the pedestrian master plan, Sarah, I'm sorry, I forgot your name at the moment, the pedestrian master plan that Cedar Rapids put together. And they did base their analysis on that kind of experiential dimension and asked people where they felt safe, what types of experiences are they particularly concerned about, and they mentioned, you know, the feeling unsafe when crossing busy streets, things of that sort. And then built their policy and ordinances around those experiences that were highlighted. I thought that was a really interesting approach, and they also identified hotspots where these experiences were felt that, you know, we might want to think about in terms of coming up with priorities, in terms of where we pay special attention to that feeling of being unsafe, in addition to where we've got these metrics on collision data. It's a quality-of-life thing as much as a safety thing. You just, how do you feel? What's the feeling? Because if we're not feeling safe when walking, that sort of pushes us back in the car. And the same, this is about pedestrians, but I think the same thing applies to biking. If you don't feel safe, you're not going to ride the bike. So that, to me, is a sort of an interesting metric as well, is just how do you feel when you're out there on the street? So thank you.
I had a related question to that. I think the, you did a great job articulating the different sort of levels of injury and the incident, and why we might pay attention more to that. And obviously, those, the reporting mechanism seems like that is one of the reasons why that's the data that you're collecting, right? That those would be incidents that go from the police department to the DOT.
So they will have, I forget the lowest, but there's like property damage, so damage to the car would be one, and then there's unknown. So any collision that is reported, the police, that will go into the, so it doesn't, it's not just an injury collision, like any collision that's reported to the police. But as you know, just like with cars, when people get in, I don't even want to call it a fender bender, a light scoff.
Minor accident.
It doesn't get reported. And so I would assume in the case where a pedestrian doesn't feel that they want to report it, it doesn't get reported. So, you know, but it would be that way with all collisions, I think, that, you know, there's just a certain level where people don't report it.
And I didn't know if there was any interest, or if you've thought internally about how to collect any information about sort of close calls or like really inconvenient areas or anything like that.
I think, you know, with the bike master plan, we did collect information on where people were having difficulties. And we've done that also with the long-range master plan, the long-range transportation plan a couple of times. With close call, I mean, it's a little, how do you define a close call is hard to treat that as if it were a collision, I think would be difficult, but I think it can feed into like an area where people have a concern.
And I think I was saying more like what Counselor Thomas was saying of that perception, you know, even more than the reality. Where do people feel like they've been threatened or are inconvenienced?
Yeah, I was just, sorry, Sarah, I'm crowding you. I was just going to, I was just going to mention that Counselor Thomas mentioned the Cedar Rapids pedestrian plan, I'll call it pedestrian master plan. And their pedestrian master plan had a ton of public outreach, and I think they did a really nice job. And it almost mimics exactly what we did for our bicycle master plan. So I think in the future, if we wanted to, as a community, we could put together a pedestrian master plan that did that very same thing. It looked at trying to identify sort of hotspots, if you will, where people just felt uncomfortable, whether it actually resulted in an actual collision or not. And then one thing I was going to mention, maybe stealing Sarah's thunder here, is we did apply for a Safe Streets for All grant in the last few months, and we're supposed to find out in October if we received it. So the MPO actually worked with all of the MPO communities, North Liberty, Corrville, Iowa City, Tiffin, University Heights, and everyone joined on to a Safe Streets for All grant application. So we applied through the new bipartisan infrastructure bill, there was funding for this, to, it was basically for $300,000 to get a consultant to come in and do that very same thing. So if we get the funding, we'll actually hire a consultant to come in and look at sort of hotspots. Now, that's community-wide, not just Iowa City. But it's not to say that Iowa City couldn't go it alone and do something, either if we didn't get that funding or just wanted to do something on our own as well. So we were supposed to find out in October if we received the funds, and if we did, it'll fund a consultant to actually come in and help us identify that, run through the public information process and public gathering process to find out where people don't feel comfortable, where we might be able to make improvements when we're not seeing it show up in this kind of report.
My last question is just if you have any strategies or ideas on the, sort of the marketing and public relations component of the fact that, you know, collisions are going down and the perception is just so different than that? I mean, I'm hearing so much about people's concerns with traffic and traffic safety and...
I do think it's, I do think it is one of those things that when you really start to look at the national data, so... So we all read in the newspaper and we hear on the radio and other places that pedestrian fatalities are way up. And certainly Iowa City has one this year.
Right.
And we had two car tragedies, so I don't in any way wish to diminish that. But when you get into the weeds of the report, you know, there are a lot of states, particularly down south, where there just are not sidewalks in large parts of the community. And I know Kent and I often talk about this when we travel different places and when you get off on like commercial strips and places like that, you know, like to get from the hotel on one side to the McDonald's on the other, there's no, there's nothing for you. And those are places where people work, you know? Those are places where people, and we observe this. I mean, fortunately and throughout all the, all the MPO communities, they're doing a pretty good job on sidewalks, but when we're out doing like early morning and peak hour counts, to see where people are walking, people are walking under the interstate along, you know, Coral Ridge Avenue. Just, you know, that there are people who have to walk in very unsafe conditions. And so there are a lot of things tied to, characteristics tied to fatalities that I think you have, you know, anytime you're walking down the street, you are a vulnerable road user by definition. I don't think our streets are unsafe, but I think there are unsafe situations. And you do have to be alert. And when you, when you read the safety system information, it's incumbent on everyone to do their part. So as a pedestrian, as a bicyclist, as a motorist, we all have to approach intersections with care. You know, even when we have the green light, you do have to check that nobody's coming, which is not at all to blame anybody who is struck by a car. But I think people would think when they, when they hear, you know, this, you know, these startling numbers nationally that they think is taking place here, and I don't, I don't think that that's reflected in the data.
Sorry, I keep, this is a team effort. I would also say too that I think part of our presentation tonight was what we're doing right. And I do think it's okay to say we're doing a pretty good job. You know, I think that's okay. I think we get caught up a little bit in that, you know, we still have fatalities and like Sarah said, we don't mean to diminish that in any possible way. But the fact of the matter is, we do, and part of what Sarah was saying earlier was pointing out that, you know, we have Burlington Street, for instance, with 20 some odd thousand cars a day, and intersections that have 500 pedestrians a day in one hour on average, is that if you would go stand on one of those corners, which we do a lot, I mean, everybody's out doing their, you know, living their lives, but when you actually sit there and watch traffic for an hour, it's organized chaos. I mean, it really is. And I don't mean that in a flippant way, but I mean, when you have that much activity and then you really don't, it's not borne out in accidents, I think it's okay to say we're doing a really good job and sort of tout the things that we are doing. We can always do better, the goal's zero, of course. But I do think there's some positivity in just saying that we are really doing a good job, we'll do better, but, you know, when we compare ourselves to other communities, we're really, we're really ahead of the game. And that's because of what the council's policies and goals have been, that's because I think staff and engineering are doing a great job. And I think we just need to keep that up and do better.
And talk about it.
But keep the messaging up that we are, you know, that it is a safe place, that your kids can go to school, hopefully safely, you know, in most cases, that you can get out and recreate safely and travel about.
I do think there's, we hear a lot about the frustration with pedestrian crossings. So we are different than the state of Minnesota. In the state of Minnesota, when you step up to the corner, people stop for you in advance of you. That takes a little getting used to, by the way. People can be really insistent that you cross. That's not the law here in the state of Iowa. And that leads to a certain culture of driving. And so we have a lot of people who say, you know, "They're not yielding for me at the pedestrian crossing," and so I will say, "So what's, tell me what's happening?" And they'll say, "Well, I'm waiting at the pedestrian crossing and nobody's stopping." And it's a complete frustration because legally they don't have to until you step into the cross, which is, you know, a catch-22. So I think we have to do more, obviously, particularly given the fatality that we had this year, to educate people more on how, we certainly don't want to give drivers permission to not pay attention at the crosswalks because they have an obligation to. But also that it, you know, I don't know how many people are coming here from out of state and their experience in their home state is different, but it is, it is one of the strange things about Iowa's law. We have brought this up as part of the Iowa's Vulnerable Road User Assessment. I'm on the pedestrian and bicycle committee for the state DOT and I bring it up regularly. So it is, you know, but it is a frustration for sure. Thank you.
I was going to actually, sort of piggybacking on all of this, is I was wondering about the potential of, I mean, so much is being done in terms of actually making the roads and the signage and, you know, as safe as possible, and of course, there can be improvement. But I was very impressed with actually all that there is to signal and to make it standard and whatnot. And I was actually very struck by the slide that talked about pedestrian collisions and unfortunately, the number in which distraction by the pedestrians, not by the drivers. And I was wondering if there's another piece to this that goes along with sort of the perception of feeling unsafe about trying to help message the ways in which we're doing a pretty good job, but then also to be able to communicate about it, for lack of a better way to put it, it is a partnership between pedestrian and drivers and cyclists and whatnot, and about making sure that everybody's sort of doing what they need to do. I mean, it's, the last thing I want to do is blame anyone, but I'm looking at the statistics here and there's some of them where it's like there could be more vigilance. And I think of myself, especially in a college town, both as, it's amazing how your attitude changes whether you're in a car or walking, right? And who has the right-of-way? And with a large body of pedestrians, just as with a large body of cars, you'd kind of be like, "It's my road," right? And I just wonder if there could be, I don't know the extent to which your work can go to sort of that educative piece as well, because I think that that's something that could, could help bolster even more safety is, you know, that it, jaywalking is not just an inconvenience, it's something that actually really has a safety, a potential safety impact. And unfortunately, we, you know, have different incidents where we know that's true. So I just wanted to sort of bring that up because I was really struck by that and especially given that we're in a university town where we have so many students and that somewhere in this presentation as well, that was noting that a lot of this was actually on game day, you know, where people are living their lives, but just those are the types of things as well to be aware all around. Drivers be aware of pedestrians, pedestrians be aware of drivers. So I think I'm oversimplifying the case, but...
We are looking at some educational programs that have gone on in other communities to look for ways that we can communicate better with people about that. But the grant that Kent mentioned would certainly help with that.
I think that's going to be immense and it's going to hit a yes and, the perception and some of the education.
My comment kind of relates to next steps and also relates to probably one of your loves, the Myrtle Avenue, Benton Street, that area in between there. And I had previously seen people that actually do cross mid-street, so I was really happy to see, although our, under the, under the bridge was next. You followed up with a great plan to sort of rearrange the street. So for follow-up, I'd just kind of like to see numbers as far as, until the cars, until the drivers get used to, that they have to kind of swerve around that area, as well as how many pedestrians are actually using that walkway. Can that be in the plans if we can kind of keep an eye on that to make sure that that really was a good idea and is worthwhile?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Yeah, no, I think it is. And we collect, we try to collect data. It's not always pre-data because sometimes we don't know when exactly a project's going to occur, but we usually always try, usually always, we usually try to collect post-data. So whether it's a traffic calming installation, whether it's a new trail, whether it would be the situation you were talking about with that project, we try to collect as much data as we can, because pretty much everything we do is data-driven. So at the end of the day, yeah, I think that's definitely something we could look at.
Well, I was, I was thinking, you kept saying, trying to do the right thing, and I think doing the right thing before there is a problem.
Yeah.
I think that's, a situation like this is what that's going to be helpful for.
Yeah, I agree. And I can't imagine it'll change the vehicular traffic patterns much, if any, but I think we can cer, but we can certainly take a look at the pedestrian traffic and see, you know, how many people were potentially jaywalking, that sort of thing, and how many people are using the new facility.
Yeah, particularly with the increased density in there, with the number of multiplexes that are going up in the area, the density has gone up.
Yep, good idea.
And pedestrians are going up.
That's one of those examples when there's not a facility there. So there was kind of just a space that you could walk through that wasn't comfortable or, and then, then you make poor decisions.
Right.
Because there is no good decision, so.
Thank you.
I guess I have two related things that's been spoken by my colleagues. One is Riverside Drive going towards the airport. Can you tell us a little bit about the sidewalk plans for there?
Do you know when that's programmed for?
Yeah, it's, so there's a series of projects that sort of address that whole area. And so if we're looking at the Highway 1-6 sort of Riverside intersection and then of course passing South Mare, like you were saying, down to the airport, there's probably three or four different projects, unfunded projects in the council's capital improvement program that would address that. None of those projects, I think, are funded this year or will be proposed to be funded at this point from the staff level, but that doesn't mean that couldn't change, of course, when it goes to the city manager's office and then on to you all. I do know that the Iowa DOT is looking to replace the Highway 6 bridge over the river. It was, I think, slated in the '28 timeframe and now it might be pushed a little bit further than that. And that's been one of the real barriers to that whole area is that there's really no river crossing there. There's some very narrow paths on either side of the bridge that I'm not sure that were ever intended for pedestrian traffic to begin with, but that's what they use it for. But I think when that bridge is replaced and through the design of that bridge, that's really when it's going to open up the opportunity for Iowa City to address all of those issues and then extending down to the airport as well. Because when you get to the Highway 1-6 Riverside intersection, currently there aren't pedestrian facilities. So, you know, that would be an island if we created a sidewalk or a side path right now down to the airport. I do also know though that I think it's either this year or next year, there is a project in the funded CIP to actually study the design of the intersection. So that coupled with the DOT's bridge project in a few years is going to, I think, provide the impetus to really get that portion cleaned up. And then as you all know, Public Works is just finishing up the, one of the sections of trail on Highway 6 in southeast Iowa City. And then also, we've got another funded project, a phase of that project coming up along Highway 6, I believe it's next year. So that all those pieces are sort of falling in place. But yes, we have design money for the Highway 1-6 and Riverside intersection. I think that'll, that'll be kind of the thrust to move forward with that.
Yeah, and it'd be a great option for biking, I guess, if you don't want to be on the roads either.
Definitely.
And then I'll just make a comment as far as like reaching out and educating. We have USG, of course, that's in the room. And so maybe connecting with them to make sure that there is some education shared with the students would be great.
It's a good idea.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both, if no more comments.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go on to clarification of agenda items, which is item number two Here and nothing. We're going to move on to item number three, which is our information packets, September We'll move on to September 28th. There are a couple of things and maybe I'll just let our city clerk lead us in that discussion.
Yeah, so the joint entities meeting's coming up on October 16th, Monday. So they're looking for items from the different entities. I do have a note, the desire to include childcare initiative update.
Will you pull your mic closer, please?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
To include a childcare initiative update at the next joint entities meeting that would include an update from the school district on their preschool initiative, as well as updates from those involved in the local childcare coalition.
I think that's probably enough from the city of Iowa City to suggest.
Yeah, I think so.
It would be great if public health could do something, maybe that's, you know, something that we can suggest to the county to make that suggestion.
I agree. I think that's a great idea, especially with the, like the new boosters and everything, flu shots and...
Mm-hmm.
Kelly, do you know if the joint entities, is that 4:30?
Yes.
Okay. And at the school district, right? It says in the memo. Yeah, okay, thanks.
So that was IP 5 and then IP 6?
Yeah, the tentative schedule for next year. Mayor and I worked together to throw together some dates. Just any comments or concerns with what was proposed?
And if, you know, none come to mind today, we want to be sensitive to any, yeah, holiday that, you know, we did not catch, that someone may want. And certainly we know we'll have, you know, some turnover on the council. So there will be those individuals that will also have an opportunity to weigh in. If nothing is noticed now, then we will go on to item number four, University of Iowa Student Government, USG updates. Welcome.
I'm going to pull this question to me. Hi, Council. We'll actually have Matthew start off today, so go ahead.
Hello, Council. Sorry. Just a reminder, we are setting up more of those introductory meetings and we want to get those kind of out of the way so we can get down to business. And yeah, and then also homecoming week is this week, so that's really fun. We have the fun things like the parade, per usual. And then we also have a mental health fair coming up that I will be tabling for USG for, so that's fun. And also a performance from rap artist Sway Lee on Friday as well, so that's really cool. And then I'll have Noah continue.
Awesome. And let's hope we don't lose in football, because that's always disappointing to me. It's still one football team I care about. We are really doing a huge campaign currently about supporting Narcan implementation. And so since the border regions were visiting, we passed a resolution in support saying that USG will do something about the current bar situation. So we're currently looking at getting Narcan in all of the Iowa City Downtown District alcohol-serving establishments. We have a meeting with them this Thursday or Friday, I can't remember, but we will be actually like fleshing out the details outside of USG. But USG seems really on board. Our health and safety and GR team is working really hard on this. And I'm really proud of everyone, including Matthew. Matthew wrote the entire resolution and he did really well for him literally just joining. I don't even think I could do it. But most importantly, we had the border regions come last week. It was a really good time. I talked really well with Regent Lindemeyer and I learned a lot about what the future of DEI could be, especially at the university, as well as they talked about what their concerns are and our concerns, not only including DEI, including food security, housing, anything like that, especially with tuition. I can go on forever about that. But they are looking to push for another $1 million, not another, they're looking to push for $1 million again in the House and Senate, looking to get that, there are going to be $3 million in total, but $1 million each to all big three universities, so us, Iowa State, and UNI. This will be going towards mental health funding, especially on campus, and like increasing how many therapists or councils we have. It failed last year, so we're really hoping to do this again. It's a big push for USG always because that mental health funding goes a really long way. And so it's a big issue, especially on campus. So that's all I really have. And do you have anything else? Awesome. Well, thank you, guys.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm going to call you back. I just have a question and I'm, I'm not sure if you can answer this or not. I know also that the Graduate Student Union was meeting with the Board of Regents, that there was a protest and that they were asking for an emergency 25% increase. Do you have any insights about how that went?
Unfortunately, I have not kind of figured out how that went. I'm going to err on the side of caution and probably say not much is going to happen. There might be a push. This is a good question for GPSG and I can reach out to them, but I, I don't know. We'll see how that goes. COGS and, we're looking for more interactions between us and COGS and GPSG itself. It's just that we've been really disconnected, especially in previous administrations for GPSG, which is the Graduate Professional Student Government, just for clarification. So, but I do not know, I can get back to you on that? I'll look into it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We'll see you Friday at Homecoming. Item number five is council updates on assigned boards, commissions and committees. Any updates?
Counselor Harmsen and I are part of the Rules Committee and we met recently, as you probably saw in your packets, with the, which I was very pleased to see, came from the TRC, their bylaws that they proposed. And we just requested a few minor modifications, but we were pleased to see that.
And that is a part of our consent agenda today.
Counselor Taylor and I attended the JEC meeting just last week or a couple of weeks ago. And I think updates from that relating to the integration of kind of the 988 rollover, not really being utilized yet. There's staffing challenges at the JEC right now, as there are in so many places. But I think it's, it'll be interesting to see how maybe some additional training can get the dispatchers to a point that they feel more comfortable with that, transferring those calls.
Here in nothing else, we're going to adjourn our work session and we'll be back for our formal meeting at 6:00 PM.